Okay. Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we get started, we're going to take a moment to honor and recognize one of our retiring judges, Judge Anthony Capizzi, who is in our Juvenile Court Judge, 18 years, is that correct?
Correct.
And later on today will be his probably first of many retirement parties. But we really wanted to recognize on behalf, I'll make great remarks this afternoon about all you've done, but it really, Tony has been a role model, not only here locally, for all the good things and innovative things you've done in the justice system, as well as across our state and our nation, and you've even gone international, it's my understanding. So we are really losing a jewel of a public servant here, and so we would definitely like to bring you up to the podium and let my fellow.
As you're coming up, you know, 18 years went by pretty fast, didn't it Judge?
It sure did.
Because I was running for commission the year he was running for the first time for judge in 2004, so we ran together then, we had one other time we were able to run together.
Right, because I run every six, you run every four, so we had one more link.
But before that, though, you know, what you have given your, you know, as a servant leader to the city of Dayton, and then, you know, to the legal community, and now to the courts, you know, we have, we know we have the best juvenile court in the state of Ohio, and it's because of your work along with Judge Kuntz, but Tony, you've always just been a positive force, and your love for our kids is amazing, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I was just going to say, I think the first time we ran together was, could have been 96, and I remember the parades in like Farmersville.
Oh sure.
Those faraway places, but I remember, you must have been either in front of me or behind me, because I remember people would just yell, "Tony, thanks for the baseball, thanks for the baseball." You know, that's, that's your, that's another feather in your cap, the baseball, yeah.
They forgot about it the year I ran for mayor, but other than that.
Yeah, 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 I know.
Well, that's right, we did forget about that.
You know, thank you Commissioners, and Michael, of course.
Judge, you and I, we had a chance to work together in a number of my different career points, especially at the state, and you always were a leader, especially in child welfare, across the state. You were a voice that we always led to in the protection of children, so I just wanted to tell you, thank you, and it was great being able to work with you as county administrator, having worked with you at the state.
Thank you all, I didn't expect this, of course, today, and I appreciate the fact that you ordered me over.
We did.
With separation of, you know, your governments, but.
I didn't mean it to seem like that, Judge.
I know that, I know that.
Susan was like, "Right now?"
We nicely invited you.
She's like, "Tell me about it, I want to hear right now."
We nicely invited you several weeks ago.
I was on the bench doing my mental health docket, and today was Christmas for those young people, and so I literally wore a Christmas sweater, stood in my robe, and a Santa's hat. And I'm sitting there in the middle of my docket, and Mr. Schaefer runs into courtroom and says, "Can I see you for a minute?"
Run out real quick, hat blown in the.
And he says, "You need to be at the county commission meeting at 11 o'clock," and luckily I was able to make it work, so believe me, I'm so glad I got to come. I have loved what I've done in my 40 years of working in this community, 40-plus, but I loved being at City Hall, I did. I loved 43 years of being a lawyer, but the last 18 years have been the best part of my career, working with the children and families in Montgomery County, working with all our partners, all of you who were able to work with us as a court, and really, we are the best court in Ohio, best juvenile court in Ohio, and we may be, I always say we're the second-best juvenile court in the country, only behind Seattle, just because in Seattle they have a better human services levy than we do, and they fund everything for children, and we do a lot in Montgomery County, don't get me wrong, but in King County, which is Seattle, they do it a little better because they have more money to work with. And Michael has been great to work with, but when I say, "I need another 10 million for this," he's always sort of pulled me back and said, "I don't think so next year." But again, just thank you for giving me the honor of coming over and doing it during a commission meeting, it's been a good ride, I'm not going away. People, I've learned now that when you retire, people think you're dying. They just say, "Goodbye, never see you again," and I plan to be in this community, I told Commissioner Rice, I plan to be a cheerleader in this community for children's issues and families' issues, and I have this great idea that I want to push through in 2023 and 2024. Since COVID hit, we couldn't do it when I wanted to in 2020, but now I have the freedom to be able to help raise money and put some pressure on you all to support a big project, so looking for things in 2023 and '24, okay? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
I'll see you later.
We'll see you in the second.
Thank you.
All right. County engineer, Paul Crimmon.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen, again, I have a hard act to follow there. We have two resolutions today, Resolution 22-1840 is to authorize a renewal of a lease agreement with HMC, Congress Park LLC, for the Engineer Inspector's Field Office leasing approximately 1,000 square feet of space located at 703 Congress Park at a monthly rate of $1,223.12 through February 28th of 2024. 1841 is to authorize the closing of Lamb Road at the Holz Creek Bridge between Alex Bell Road and Bill Isle Drive lasting approximately nine months for a bridge replacement.
Move to approve. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County sheriff.
Thank you Commissioners, under the county sheriff, we have Resolution 1842 authorizing an agreement with Premier Health Department of Public Safety for the use of three mobile data computer license on the Motorola Premier One CAD platform with a revenue of $3,750 each year with a 5% increase annually through December 31st, 2027. We also have Resolution 1843, extend the price agreement with Aramark Correctional Services LLC for detention food services for the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile Court through December 31st, 2023. And finally, we have Resolution 1844, accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Grant Fund for the Regional Agencies Narcotics and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in the amount of $45,468.20.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Common Police Court.
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 1845, amend Resolution Number 140388 to utilize and establish outside bank account for juror payments in the amount of $15,000. We also have Resolution 1846, authorize an agreement with Rapid Financial Solutions to provide juror payment services.
Move to approve. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Probate Court.
Under the probate court, we have Resolution 1847, authorizing an agreement with Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley through Life Essentials for guardianship services in the amount not to exceed $90,000 through December 31st, 2022.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County prosecutor.
On behalf of the county prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr., Resolution 221848 to appropriate the Montgomery County Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection or DTAC Fund as of December 31st, 2022 to the offices of the county treasurer and prosecuting attorney, and approve the 2023 annual appropriation.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile court.
Good afternoon, thank you Commissioners, I offered to ask if he wanted to do it, but he said he needed to head out, so we have two items on the agenda today. 1849 is authorize an agreement with K-12 Gallery for young people to provide educational services to juveniles at the juvenile court schools in an amount not to exceed $80,000 through December 31st, 2023, and 1850 amend the agreement with IBM to provide software and project integration support for the juvenile case management system, JCS, and Watson Care Manager, WCM, by amending the term through December 31st, 2023.
The K-12 program is so great for the kids, isn't it?
It is.
You know, I've seen what they do, the curriculum.
Murals and the education, and even the involvement with the probation department.
Really great, good connection you guys made there. I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's office.
Thank you Commissioners, under the county treasurer, we have Resolution 1851, appropriate the Montgomery County Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection DTAC Fund as of December 31st, 2022 to the offices of the county treasurer and prosecuting attorney, and approve the 2023 annual appropriation.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Auditor's office.
Under the county auditor, we have Resolution 1852, authorizing an agreement with local government services section of the office of the Auditor of State, LGS, for compilation of financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2022 at a cost not to exceed $42,500 through December 31st, 2023.
I move for approval.
They're a year in reverse.
I got you.
Okay.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Under Monday Community Correctional Institution, we have Resolution 1853, request proposals for detention food services for the Monday Community Correctional Institute at an estimated cost of $325,000.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County administrator.
Under the county administrator, under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on December 13th, 2022. Resolution 1854, approval bills in that list is available in the clerk's office.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative services, Tyler.
Good afternoon Commissioners, we have a variety of resolutions for your review today, beginning with 1855, this is the approval of personnel actions, this list is available in the clerk's office. 1856 selects the bid and authorizes an agreement with LePI Enterprises Incorporated for the Calumet Gym Floor Removal Project at their sole bid of $102,226 through March 31st of 2023. 1857 authorizes a price agreement with Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley for janitorial services for various county departments in an amount not to exceed $741,120 through December 31st, 2023 with options to extend. 1858 authorizes a lease option renewal with Randolph Investments LLC on behalf of the clerk of courts auto title division for leasing of 1,000 square feet of office space located in the Randolph Plaza Shopping Center at an annual rate of $9,500 through December 31st, 2023. Resolution 859 extends the service agreement with Franklin Iron and Metal Incorporated for scrap metal removal services for various county departments through December 31st, 2023. 1860 is a resolution to apply for a grant for the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for the Serving, Educating, and Empowering Fathers Program for the Office of Strategic Initiatives in the amount of $550,000 through June 30th of 2025. The following three resolutions authorize agreements, beginning with 1861 with the County Risk Sharing Authority, also known as CORSA, for risk management information systems, system services in an amount not to exceed $49,900 through December 31st, 2024. 1862 is with Community Insurance Company, doing business as Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for stop-loss insurance in an amount not to exceed $1,131,498 through December 31st, 2023 with an option to extend. And 1863 is with TK Elevator for elevator modernization and maintenance services at the administration building in an amount not to exceed $1,716,719 through December 31st of 2024. The next three resolutions authorize service agreements with Sinagros Central LLC for the Environmental Services Department with options to extend. The first is 1864 for BioSolids Management Services through December 31st, 2026. Next is 1865 for BioSolids Dewatering Operations through December 31st, 2023. And last is 1866 for Vector Pit Disposal Services through December 31st, 2026. The last two resolutions solicit bids, beginning with 1867 for a salt storage facility project for the environmental, for the engineer's office at an estimated cost of $708,000. And last is 1868 for the Montgomery County Jail Lobby Security Project at an estimated cost of $70,370. We also have one late item, and that item is Resolution 1941, and it authorizes an agreement with Matrix Claims and Management LLC, doing business as Assent Risk Management for Family Medical Leave Act, third-party administration through December 35th, 31st, 2025 with options to renew.
Move to approve.
Second, are you doing a new storage facility? Where will that be?
At our office.
Okay.
There are old domes, they're long and well, but they're getting tired.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Environmental services.
Good afternoon Commissioners, for environmental services, we have a Resolution 1869, authorize a state-local grant agreement with the State of Ohio Emergency Management Agency for the Stillwater Lift Station Generator Project in the amount of $95,146.46. Resolution 1870, solicit requests for qualifications for consultant services for the Green Hill and Hornwood Water Main Replacement Project, Falmouth and Esmeralda Water Main Replacement Project, Cedarline Water Main Replacement Project, Mance Water Main Replacement Project, and Jasamine Water Main Replacement Project. Resolution 1871, release 100% of the performance bond and subdividers contract from Renegade Warehouse LLC for the Renegade. 1872, release 100% of the letter of credit and subdividers contract from VWC Holdings Limited for the Villages of Winding Creek Boulevard Sections 8 and 9. Resolution 1873, release 100% of the cash surety and subdividers contract from Berry Deo for the Deo Farm Water Main Extension Project. And the last one, Resolution 1874, accept the 20% letter of credit for the River Dell Development in the amount of $103,183.29.
Remove for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Office of Management and Budget.
We have three resolutions this morning. 1875 authorize a Crow Government Accelerator Software Subscription Licensing Agreement with Crow LLC in an amount not to exceed $417,200 through March 19th, 2028. 1876 amend Resolution 211542 dated December 14th, 2021 to define the agreement with Crow LLP for D365 Technical and Functional Support Services as a master services agreement. And 1877 authorize a statement of work with Crow LLP for D365 Technical and Functional Support Services in an amount not to exceed $400,000 through December 31st, 2023.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Human services.
Well Commissioner, we have several resolutions for you today, under the Human Services and Operations through December 31st of 2023. 1881 is to amend an agreement with St. Vincent de Paul for emergency shelter diversion services by extending the term through June 30th of 2023. 1882 is to extend a continuum of care planning grant, excuse me, from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development through December 31st of 2023, and then 1883 accept a grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the continuum of care planning in amount of $325,694. And then we have several agreements through December 31st of 2023, and this is the follow-up from the list last week. 1884 YWCA Dayton for DV Shelter Case Management Services of $50,000. 1885 St. Vincent de Paul Social Services for Emergency Shelter Services, $1,353,657. 1886 Wesley Community Center for Workforce Development, Job Ready Day One, West Dayton Family Success Network, $94,386. Resolution 1887 Wesley Community Center for Senior Gyms and Transportation, $128,954. Resolution 1888 YWCA Dayton for Housing Focus Shelter Services, $19,190. 1889 Alzheimer's Association for Miami Valley Education Care and Support Expansion, $23,800. Resolution 1890 Legal Aid of Western Ohio for Legal Assistance for Survivors, $50,000. 1891 Parity Inc. for Youth Development for Success Program, $60,000. 1892 Omega Community Development Corporation for Scholars of Hope Program, $60,000. 1893 University of Dayton for Ethical Family Advocacy, for $100,000. 1894 West Care Ohio for East End Neighborhood Job Connections Program, $115,000. 1895 Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley for Medical Equipment Loan for $35,000. 1896 for Preschool Promise Inc. for the Early Care and Education Birth to Three, H3 Initiative, $50,000. Resolution 1897 for Sinclair Community College Fast Forward Center for $400,000. 1898 Sinclair Community College for the Development and Coordination of Mentoring Services for $200,000. 1899 Greater Dayton Volunteer Lawyers Project for Pro-Bono Legal Services, $24,550. Resolution 1900 Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley for Irma's House, $50,000. 1901 for Legal Aid of Western Ohio Inc. for Collaborative Holistic Legal Services for $128,000. Resolution 1902 for West Care Ohio for Gardening and Nutrition Education, $69,000. 1903 for Homeful for West Dayton Food Access 2.0 for $150,152. Resolution 1904 for Dakota Center Inc. for Dakota Center After School for $36,500. 1905 for Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio for the Adult Solid Opportunities for Advancement and Retention Program, $119,180. Resolution 1906 Daybreak for Youth Shelter Services, $189,103.63. 1907 for YWCA Dayton for Domestic Violence Shelter Services, $156,220. 1908 for St. Vincent de Paul for Housing Focus Shelter Services, $348,902.87. 1909 for House of Bread for Outreach Meals for $10,000. 1910 for Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley for Family Stabilization and Support, $60,000. 1911 for Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Greater Miami Valley for the Critical Mentoring Ruskin and Cleveland Elementary Students Program for $30,000. 1912 for West Care for Miracle Makers for $183,750. 1913 for West Care Ohio Inc. for the Positive Youth Development Program for $75,000. And 1914 for Legal Aid of Western Ohio for Legal Aid Assistance for Stable Employment Program in an amount of $30,000. 1915 for Goodwill Easter Seals for Miami Valley Works for $169,385. 1916 for Greater Dayton Volunteer Lawyers Project for the CSIP Program, $24,550. 1917 for Omega Community Development Corporation for the Hope Center Family Services for $68,000. 1918 for Daybreak for the Employment Opportunity Program for $169,085. 1919 for Daybreak for Transitional Housing Services for $77,728. And 1920 for United Way of the Greater Dayton Area for Help Link 211 Services for $50,000. In addition, under the Department of Job and Family Services, we have Resolution 1921, which is to authorize an agreement to provide eligibility referral and support services for the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services or Animus Board with funding reimbursement in actual amounts of 50% of expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31st of 2023. 1922 authorize an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General and Bureau of Criminal Investigations, or BCI, for National Web Check Program and Equipment Services in an amount not to exceed $80,000 per calendar year for three years. 1923 to authorize an inter-agency agreement with the Office of Strategic Initiatives for Justice Web Interactions and Reports in an amount not to exceed $75,000 through December 31st, 2023. 1924 is authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Office of Reentry for Space within a Job Center Suite 1175 through December 31st of 2023. 1925 is authorizing a sole source purchase from Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority, RTA, for the TAPP bus passes and para-transit passes for non-emergency transportation services in an amount not to exceed $1 million through December 31st of 2023. 1926 is the Sunset Enterprises doing business as open online to provide background checks and multiple verifications for employment in an amount not to exceed $28,000 through December 31st of 2023. Also, we have agreements for substitute care services through March 31st of 2024. 1927 a Loving Heart Youth Services, Inc. 1928 with Presley Ridge. Also to exercise options and modify articles through December 31st of 2023. Resolution 1929 Dayton Children's Hospital to provide services through Care House in an amount not to exceed $200,000. 1930 Valley Transport LLC to provide non-emergency transportation and broker services in amount not to exceed $2,689,741. 1931 is Goodwill Easter Seals of the Miami Valley for the Ohio Works First and Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Employment and Training Services in an amount not to exceed $575,000. And then Resolution 13, excuse me, 1932 with Miami Valley Interpreters LLC for interpreting services in an amount not to exceed $2,500. And then we have one late agenda item under Job and Family Services, and it's Resolution 1942 authorize an agreement to provide eligibility referral and support services to Premier Health Partners with funding reimbursement in actual amounts of 50% of expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31st of 2023. And lastly, we have a resolution for Stillwater Center, 1933, to authorize an agreement with Dr. M. Lynn Loving doing business as Family Practice Associates of Dayton LLC for physician services in amount not to exceed $99,336 through December 31st of 2023.
Well.
Wow.
You need a little sip of water there, for heaven's sakes, you did great. You know, and, yeah, we're so familiar with these agencies, and they just do such a great job, so this is just great, so.
Mm-hmm.
For another year.
Yes.
It is. Well, I move for approval. Okay, move to approve.
Okay, okay.
Moved and seconded.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jerry, you know, as we said last week, these are, these are our partners in the community that are making sure that we have a great place to live, and it touches so many families. Again, we hear repeats of agencies, but that's because of specific programs and the way that you guys do the grants, and, yeah, and so it's, yeah, it's a lot.
Well, I mean, this list just goes to show the broad range, I mean, it's tremendous, and just setting it up for next year, all that will do, so I find often that our citizens don't fully appreciate all the different touches that we have with all the departments, honestly, but, but a listing like this certainly brings it forefront of the wide breadth of things that are happening, depending on the need, and there is an agency or a partnership that is there to try to address it, so, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and the services, as you mentioned, support people within the community based upon those needs and services, so we're here to serve, as our mission says.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now I forget, did we all vote?
No.
Okay, all the, it's been moved and seconded, I'll say aye.
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 Ah, threw me off. Business services.
I only have four resolutions.
Ooh.
You need to get with him for next meeting.
Under Community and Economic Development, 1934 advertise a notice of finding of no significant impact, a notice of intent to request release of funds for the Grand Place Apartments Project utilizing home investment program funds and authorizing the execution and submittal of required documents. 1935 terminates the. Nineteen thirty-five, terminates the agreement with Salvation Army Dayton Croc Center for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The next two authorize agreements for the Building Regs Department through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. First one's nineteen thirty-six, Safe Belt LLC for Certified Building Official and Backup Building Official, including Commercial and Residential Services in Amount not to Exceed Forty-nine Thousand Dollars. And nineteen thirty-seven, XPEX LLC for Commercial and Residential Plan Review Consulting Services in Amount not to Exceed Forty-eight Thousand.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You know, Commissioners, before you move forward, the, the work that, that you all supported us doing in rental assistance is really second to none in the state, and I think we've actually eclipsed some of the outside state partners. We're at some twenty million dollars in total expenditures, and, you know, countless thousands of people served through rental assistance throughout our county. So, thanks, Chris, you and your team, Tawana's out in the audience. I know she's worked hard on this program, the entire CED team. And as we are getting closer and closer to our award eclipse at twenty-two million, we're going to see partners that are going to start to drop off. Although the Fed is continuing to tell us they're going to send us more money as other, other counties are not utilizing, so. Thank you, Commissioners, for your support in this program. I really, really do appreciate you allowing us to move forward on this and get this out the door.
Well, thank you, you know. It was one of those areas that if we wouldn't have done it, who knows how many people were homeless we would have had, and.
Evictions.
Evictions, and it's just been, Tawana, great job, thank you.
To the whole team and all the agencies that are actually, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Making the connections. All right.
I want to talk about Eric now, or are we going to wait?
No, we're not done yet.
We're waiting, okay. I want to talk about him now.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
All right, County Commissioners. Resolution nineteen thirty-eight, elect Commissioner Debbie Lieberman to serve as President of the Board of County Commissioners for the year twenty twenty-three. Nineteen thirty-nine, set the dates and times for all regular session meetings of the Montgomery County Board of County Commissioners for the year twenty twenty-three. Nineteen forty, appoint designate County Commissioners and/or their designees to serve on various boards and committees for a one-year term. And that is it for ours.
I guess I'll have to move to approve, because I would like a recount on this.
You can have it.
It's okay, it's okay, you can do it.
And she has to wait three weeks.
I know. No.
Okay, I'll second it, second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Debbie.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And thank you for the pass, Jerry.
Yep. Yes. Do we have any comments by our citizens? Okay, our county administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners, and, and I will still a little thunder, because I've worked with Eric in a number of different lives, and I look forward to working with Eric in his new role. But before I go into my normal comments, Commissioners, I'd like to say that Eric, congratulations, both on retirement and your next adventure. Working with you on Edge and Workforce and CID, CIC, and, you know, all of the different things, the Jeds, the work in economic development, your teaching skills at University of Oklahoma. It's just been pretty phenomenal. Foreign Trade, Entrepreneur Center, the list goes on and on and on. And I've always told you, I think you could lead any number of organizations throughout the state and throughout the country, and it's been really a blessing to work with you. I put emphasis on that, because you've done a lot of great things. So the list of projects, the economic development, the number of people that have gotten jobs has been truly fantastic. So, thank you, and I think you've left us a gift in, in your transition and having your team in place, and so, thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Eric. We don't want to say goodbye, and we're not saying goodbye, we're saying, okay, see you later. You know that you're going to have to, even though you're going to be in a new role, it's always going to be, call Eric, call Eric, call Eric. And one of the things, and I know Michael didn't leave it off on purpose, but one of the things that you've done that we're so thankful for is the work with Dorita. And, you know, when we started, and I remember going to Israel that first time, and it's just, I mean, we had Hadass here two weeks ago, right? And just to see all the connections that I've made, and we really have to thank you for guiding that all the years, and for everything you've done. Remember the very first time I met you, you were just a child at the Jewish center up on Genlinger, and, yeah, thirty-two years with the county. That's amazing, Eric. I'm right with you, I'm thirty-two years as well, so we were children, weren't we? I feel like we were children. But Eric, thanks, you know, really, that's all I can say, is just thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Eric, you know, business first, I mean, that's your baby, so, but we're going to keep it here, but you can certainly be involved in your position, no question about it. But, you know, what can I say? You know, you are the biggest cheerleader for this community that I have ever known in all the years you've been here. You're just so passionate and happy all the time, and are you happy when you go home at night?
I, I try to be.
Turn it off.
Yes, I try.
Turn off the happy.
Because you are, you're always upbeat.
It's a choice, right? I try to be happy.
Thank you.
Yeah, but thank you, thank you for everything, and you know we're going to be in touch, so.
So they've left me nothing to say. I would just be repeating, but, you know, my relationship with the county doesn't go back as far, but we were actually friends before I even joined the county, so our friendship certainly precedes my public service, and you are the epitome of an outstanding public servant, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Big shoes to fill, Tawana and team. But I know, I have great faith in all of you as well, because he has the same theory that I do, you surround yourself with incredible people, and then you accomplish great things. So the whole team that you've built, and you've done wonders with the building regs and the challenges you've had recently, and not many people could do it as brilliantly as you do it, and in the time that you do it, and with the heart that you do everything that you do. So you were stellar, their gain is our loss, but you have left so much behind of such an impact, you can be nothing but extremely proud, and we are extremely proud of you.
I, I think the thing I wanted to say is gratitude. In nineteen eighty-four, I went to Buckeye Boys State, and that had a major impact. I took, like we all are required to do, take high school history, and I was nominated to go to Buckeye Boys State at Bowling Green University in nineteen eighty-four, and that was a, a turning point to public service, because of my, I was always inquisitive about, you know, and always interested in serving the public. And then I went to Wright State, and I served as an intern during the required internship period, and I went to, I worked for the RTA, and they said, come to, I want you to go to Montgomery County and sit in the audience in this very room and take notes of the commission meeting, and it was in the late eighties, and at that time, I saw the director up here, and I was like, I want to be up there someday.
Oh, wow, really?
You know, I want to, I want to serve Montgomery County. And so, you know, just hard work and dedication and support, the word is grateful, and I, it has not, I wouldn't change anything about my service here at Montgomery County. I've been honored to work for four county administrators. Michael, I'm grateful for your support, letting me do what I need to do to help, and I appreciate that, and countless county commissioners and directors and just very dedicated public servants to make this county a great county, and I am, I will always be dedicated to Montgomery County, whether I'm down in Centerville or wherever, I am going to be here to be the big champion for the work that, that we do here to serve our great citizens in, in Montgomery County. So I'm just thankful. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I spent four hours there a couple of weeks, weeks ago, we went to a U.C. basketball game, and I can, he was smiling the entire time. He was looking forward to his new opportunity, but really sad to be leaving the county and losing all the people there.
We're really happy for you.
It was the hardest, honestly, I've had two, two jobs in my career, and this, this has really been the hardest thing to, to not say goodbye, but to move on to the next, next iteration. It was, it was painful, but I've got so many good people here, and I can't wait to work with everyone in the next, next chapter, so, thank you.
Thank you. It's always warm and cheerful in Centerville, so, you're a perfect fit.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, and thank you again, Eric. We'll continue to work together in your, in your next role, so we're looking forward to it. Commissioners, I would also like to give a shout-out to our Environmental Services Team, and a group that you don't hear much from, but our Environmental Laboratory recently participated in annual drinking water proficiency testing program, and this is to ensure that our customers and our residents across Montgomery County are provided safe and clean drinking water. An unacceptable result can lead to a loss of certification, and out of seventy-seven results that the lab submitted, all of them were considered acceptable. The laboratory also participated in the annual wastewater proficiency testing, which is on the sewer side, and this is to ensure that the water that goes back into the environment from our sewer is of the top quality. And of the latest round, thirty-one samples, all were submitted and evaluated as acceptable.
That's great.
So our lab is doing a fantastic job, Matt, you and your team. You make sure that our water's safe, and that our water that goes back into the environment is of the top quality. Commissioners, thank you. We're building a new Environmental Services Lab, which will be downstairs, and having it central to both our plants and to the river, so this is, this will be pretty, pretty fantastic, so, thank you, Matt, you and your team, please thank the lab team, they're doing fantastic work, and Commissioners, thank for your support.
Congratulations, yeah, that's great. Great news.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
They do hard work. When it's real hot in the summer, and now when it's real cold, there they are, they're out there.
Yeah, let's pray for not a lot of breaks in the water mains.
Yeah.
Well, I want to remind everyone that most of our Montgomery County offices will be closed on Monday, December twenty-sixth, and again on Monday, January second, due to the holidays. I think that would be Christmas and New Year's. Now, one exception is our solid waste district. Matt, I think you know about this. Now, you're going to be open Monday through Friday for the next two weeks, six a.m. to seven p.m., six a.m. to seven p.m., okay? However, the solid waste district will close early this Friday at six o'clock. That's this Friday, December twenty-third, right? Okay. And they will also be closed both Saturday and Sunday for the next two weeks due to the holidays, so. Hopefully, everyone will remember that.
Yes. So, this is always fun. You know, our community is so kind to our, our animals that are at the shelter, and we have a organization, it's newer, isn't it? Body and Fray? I'm pretty sure it's pretty new. Body, Bahadi and Fray's Place, and they're a local dog care and training facility, and they'll be donating holiday dinners to nearly a hundred dogs that we have at the shelter. That's really nice. It'll be this Friday, I think, are you guys going to try to go, two of you, one of you?
I'm going, because I, you know, I'm not too careful.
I know you love dogs, too. And so, they're going to have turkey and gravy, mashed potatoes. I know, right? Mashed potatoes, green bean, peas, oats, and peanut butter cookies, pumpkin cakes, and apple con. Isn't that great?
Wow.
And I think that's so nice. And so, thanks to Bahadi and Fray's Place for thinking of our four-legged friends that are there for the holiday season, and everybody, don't forget, there's a lot of dogs to adopt.
Definitely, but make sure you really want it, don't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, don't just do it because it's Christmas.
That's not fair to the dog, if you're not really.
Because we don't want them back.
You know, committed.
Want somebody to take some?
Right.
Please.
Well, so, last Friday, Iowa had the great fortune of going up to Columbus and representing us at the Power of Clean Future Ohio Annual Luncheon, and low and behold, we got an award, which I was not expecting, and, you know, we passed our.
That's pretty.
Yeah, our sustainability plan, so we are in the forefront amongst those counties in Ohio and probably in the nation, but it was a wonderful gathering, so I was pleased to accept this on behalf of all the good work we do in the environmental field, and I would say to the Office of Strategic Initiatives, I know they worked with every department in the entire county, which makes us stand out as having sustainability plans, so this is for all of our entire organization, we're doing good work, so.
We are. Thanks, Tyler. I know a lot of your team has really worked hard and for sustainability and green efforts, and.
Right. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about is far more sad and serious, is that the longest night of the year and the first day of winter is tomorrow, and this is also National Homeless Persons Memorial Day, and I know I attend every year. Sadly, I have to report that in Montgomery County, more than eighty individuals who were experiencing homelessness lost their lives this year, and every night, more than five hundred households experience homelessness in Montgomery County. Think about that, five hundred every night. We will pause to remember these lives lost during a vigil at Courthouse Square tomorrow at noon. Please consider joining us if you can, and it's, it's a very somber, but we, you know, in these times, we're very concerned, quite honestly, I know I'm going to be working with your team, on housing is more challenging than ever, pricing going up, and we already had limited, so please keep, if you're not able to join us, maybe at noon, take a moment to have a moment of silence on those who didn't have homes and lost their lives on the streets of our county, so very sad. But our next meeting will be Tuesday, January tenth, at one-thirty p.m., but hopefully, we are wishing everyone happy holidays, safe travels, hope you stay well, stay, hopefully no illness, that's flu and COVID and RSV, and it's all going strong, so please take care of yourselves, travel safely, and whatever your tradition, we celebrate with you and are grateful for a wonderful twenty-twenty-two, although it had its challenges, and we are all looking forward to an awesome twenty-twenty-three for ourselves, our families, as well as our whole community. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do, but you mentioned families, and I just want to point out that your family is here.
Yes, Carolyn.
And it's not the first time those two have been at a meeting, is it?
Why don't you come up so they can see you?
Come on up, come on up.
Come up to the.
Are you kidding me? Yeah, we're talking about you guys.
Yes. Come on up to the, so they can see you. So, this is my daughter, Meredith, and she has a bum ankle, she sprained it, so she might not be walking up here. That's my daughter, Meredith, and these are my, two of my four grandchildren, Wyatt and Evan from Denver, Colorado, so they don't hardly, I only get to see them once or twice a year, well, two times, three times a year, and so they get to see what, they got to come today to see what I do, because they help me, they're my best campaigners.
Yeah.
So, glad you could be here. Love you guys.
That's great. And you might want to point out your husband's here, too.
And my husband, Mike, who is my best, you know.
While she's getting ready to cry, I'm going to say this, he supports us because he's one of the few people that watches our meeting on Facebook, and I always really appreciate it, that at least we have someone out there that watches us on Facebook. He's our top fan, yeah.
Yeah, he got noticed, that he's the top fan from Facebook.
Yeah, and he points out things, and he'll text, you know, over here to Paul, and Paul will say, hey, you know.
Well, anyways, with all, from all of us to all of you, happy, happy holidays, and stay well and stay safe.
Thanks, everybody, for a great year.
Thanks, everybody, have a good holiday.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we didn't do it.
Did you do, all right.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, second.
We are adjourned.